Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty, Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with an invocation by Pastor Leonard Hines of the Henry County Fire Department. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance, and then we're going to take a moment of silence to honor the victims and their families that were killed in the city of Hampton this past weekend. Pastor Hines, if everyone would stand.
Well, good evening, let's pray together. Our Father, we come to Thee tonight. Lord, we've experienced grief in our midst. And Lord, I lift up those family members, loved ones of the five victims of the tragedy this past weekend. Lord, they need to see love, they need to see grace. And Lord, I pray that You'd provide the resilience in Your people to support that. And Lord, in this meeting tonight, the agendas, perhaps appointments or whatever may be before this board, I pray You'd bless them, lead them, give them wisdom, and Lord, that decisions would be made with You in the midst, and that You'd be honored. We thank You for our great county, we thank You for all those that labor to protect and serve. And Lord, some of those now with heavy hearts over the past few days, and we ask You to bless them and their families. So Lord, meet with us now, tonight, in this meeting, and we'll thank You and give You the praise and glory, we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent meditation, and then I'll pray once more. Our Father, in this time of silence, Lord, we know that You speak with a still, small voice. And so I ask You for the families, the loved ones, the friends, those within the community, Lord, affected by the events of this past weekend, that not only, Lord, that You would use us, but that You would bathe them in Your love and Your grace. Lord, they've lost a mom, a dad, a son, and I ask You'd show Yourself strong. Touch this meeting tonight, once again, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, you may be seated.
During the June twentieth, twenty-three BLC meeting, the following planning and zoning cases was tabled to July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, but the applicant and staff have postponed, said matters. AP dash twenty-three dash zero-two, Appeal Hearing, TPA Residential LLC is being postponed. The following planning and zoning items listed on the July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three BLC meeting have been tabled at the request of the applicants, that's Comp Amendment twenty-two dash twelve, RZ dash twenty-two dash twenty, and the Appeal dash, the AP dash twenty-three dash zero-four. All of those items have been postponed, are tabled by the applicant and staff, and if anyone is here for any of those items, they will not be heard tonight. Presentations, the next item on the agenda is going to be SPLUS and T-SPLUS updates from our cluster leader, Rocky Ramirez.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. I'm going to give a presentation of, an update of, of our projects for both SPLUS and T-SPLUS. So we have active projects, those are projects that are under construction. Currently, right now, we have about six projects, including all the resurfacing. I got some slides, some pictures, I'm just going to go down. The first one is Pixville Road. Pixville is in District One, it's a dirt road, it's a little bit over a mile. It's currently under construction, as you can see in the pictures, grading is in progress, clearing is completed, grading, lane pipes, and utility relocation in progress. The next one is in District Three, Northola Park. As you're aware, Northola Park entrance originally was real small, so right now, we're widening. Currently, we're actually, we're paving this week out there, so all the gravel that you see in the pictures is covered with asphalt currently. Now we have a more of a boulevard-type entrance, and pretty soon we'll be adding a sign for the entrance. Next one is Race Track Road in Irish Lake, on the SPLUS five, it was a shared project for District One and District Three. It's under construction, as you can see, a lot of the curbing powder has been installed, and also the grading, and utility is also in progress. We also have, in addition to the resurfacing, on the previous slide, we also have Bridges Road at Willow Lane, that's a project that we just, the board awarded last month, and we just have a notice to proceed on that one, so they're going to be starting on that one here pretty soon, as well as Selfridge Road. Selfridge Road is located near, near the airport, it's a dirt road, and we're going to be working on that one pretty soon, actually, next week, they're going to start working grading on that one. Then on the resurfacing roads, we have, this contract is about twenty-five million dollars, we'll be completing it this year, and these are some of the roads that we have completed, Southola Road, Leguine Mill, Pixville Road, here you can see Lake Dow, Alley Drive, and Upchurch Road, just as an example of some of the roads that we have resurfaced. Upcoming projects, those are the upcoming projects that are going out for bid here pretty soon. Rockaway Road, Rockaway Road is also included on our T-SPLUS, but we include it here because all the, all the design and roadway has been completed on the SPLUS five. The roadway is completed on this project, we are waiting for the environmental to be approved by GDOT and Federal Highway, so once that's approved, we're going to put it out for bid. Dutchtown Road, Dutchtown Road is currently a dirt road, and it connects to, connects Jonesboro Road and Mount Carmel Road, that project, we're currently on the roadway negotiations right now, acquisition, and as soon as we acquire all the roadway, we'll put it out for bid, we expect to bid it out around November, hopefully before the end of the year. Flipping Road Extension, as you can see, is a brand-new road, is actually going to connect to the Dutchtown School Complex, and also, we're going to tie into the Jonesboro Road, the intersection with North Mount Carmel. This is a good project, because now, not only the school, but everybody in that area will be able to come into a traffic light on Jonesboro Road. It also includes a bridge, this has a pointer, right here, and right now, roadway is completed, but we're waiting on the environmental to be approved, so we can build the bridge over the, over the stream. Next one, we have Western Pala Connector. Western Pala Connector is not a SPLUS project, but it's a, it's a general fund project, but it's also managed by SPLUS, so we include it in here. As you can see, we have roughly about twenty-three parcels, we're about eight parcels to go to finish the acquisition on this project. This is a project that is a GDOT project, we're only acquiring the roadway for GDOT, and GDOT is expected to bid this project first of next year. There's Bridges at Willow, as I mentioned, is, we already issued a notice to proceed on that one, and hopefully start construction here pretty soon. And Selfridge, as you can see on, on the picture, you can see the airport, and also the hangars at the airport. T-SPLUS projects, we have Stair Route eighty-one, Bill Garner, Jonesboro Road, McDonough Parkway, Mill Road Widening, and Fairview Road Widening. On Stair Route eighty-one, currently, if you drive in that area, you're going to see a lot of stakes, we're getting ready to start acquiring roadway. We just got the, from GDOT, the agreement signed by both the Chair here and the GDOT Commissioner, so now we have the notice to proceed to start acquiring roadway. There's about a hundred and seventeen parcels, so sometimes people ask, why it takes so long to build a road? We have to negotiate now for a hundred and seventeen parcels, so that's, that's a very task, you know, it's a, a lot of, some of these property owners, if it's commercial, they not be leaving here, so we have to do things through, through the mail, so it's probably going to take about a year to acquire the roadway. That's continuation of Stair Route eighty-one. Bill Garner Parkway, Bill Garner Parkway goes from Stair Route one fifty-five to I-75, preliminary plans have been completed, we are waiting for utilities to provide their relocation. Once relocation is included in our plans, then we can start acquiring roadway, so hopefully we can get all the utilities this, before the end of the year, we can start acquiring this year. And there's roughly around ninety parcels on this project. That's the end of Bill Garner. Jonesboro Road, Jonesboro Road goes from North Mount Carmel to I-75. Currently, right now, we have completed preliminary plans, we've been doing a lot of coordination with, there's a lot of developments in that area, so we've been coordinating with the developers, with GDOT, because GDOT is, of course, working on the Western Pala, and also on Mill Road, all those, we have three projects, two, two major projects, plus all the developments going in that area, that we've been doing a lot of coordination. And that one, I swear, we should be starting acquiring roadway on this project by, by the end of this year. Then we have the McDonough Parkway, McDonough Parkway goes just east of Stair Route forty-two, it kind of dead ends, and we're going to continue from there on a brand-new alignment, as you can see on the picture, and all the way to Turner Church. And as you can see, we are also going over Stair Route one fifty-five with a brand-new bridge, so roadway on that project's all completed, on this project, we're waiting for, for GDOT to approve, the final approval on the bridge and encroachment, so once we get that approval, they have reviewed the plans one time, once, we have made the changes, submitted again, so once we have that approval from GDOT, we'll bid it out, so it could be anytime now, so we can, you know, hopefully by September, so we can bid it out. Mill Road Widening, that goes from Jonesboro Road to the Flea Market, as you can see in the drawing, preliminary plans are completed, and this is another project, we're working with utilities to get the relocation, once we get the relocation, then we can move forward to, to roadway. Fairview Road Widening, this is from Cook to Stair Route one fifty-five, we have completed preliminary plans, again, this is another project, is moving forward, waiting on utilities to provide their, their final relocation, so we can include it in the plans, and then we can start acquiring roadway. And we have also some completed projects for SPLUS five. What happened, is, is the pictures are not there. Okay, so on those completed projects, I don't know why I can't go back, I want to go back. I'll mention them, we have the Southola Road Project Extension, we have the Stair Route twenty at Turner Church, Stair Route one fifty-five at Greenwood Parkway, also the West Village Parkway, which is a brand-new four-lane divided road, and also, we, we have the Jonesboro Road resurfacing, this was not a SPLUS project, it was actually, the resurfacing of Jonesboro Road was a, we received federal funds, we applied for, for ARC funding, and we received that funding, but the SPLUS department managed that project, so it was a very needed resurfacing project, I swear. That's, that's my update, if you, anybody has a, any of the commissioner has a question?
Rocket, can you share this PowerPoint with the board, please?
I will.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Henry County Building and Facilities Authority. Each board member will have one appointment for a two-year term, there is also a district residency requirement, with the exception of the Chair's appointment. Once the authority is formed, they will choose the frequency and meeting dates that work best for the group as a whole. This is a voluntary board, so there is no compensation, but the legislation does state that they can be reimbursed for certain expenses. So do we have to vote on these individually, or can we vote on it as a group collectively?
I think if you just state which district and the name, we could do it one vote.
Okay. I don't know if any of the appointees are here, but if, if they are, if you all would like to stand, that, that would be great. The Chair's appointment is Chris Williams, District One is Don Mason, District Two is Richard J. Sylvia, Jr., District Three is David Curry. Hello, David. District Four is George Patterson, and District Five is Kenyatta Bush. Can I get a motion to approve the appointees?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and two seconds. There's no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Next is the Henry County Airport Authority. The Airport Authority, there will be five members, at least four out of the five shall reside in Henry County for a term of four years, they must be twenty-one years of age with no felonies. One member shall be appointed from one or more of the nominations made by the representatives in the Henry County delegation. One member shall be appointed from one or more nominations made by the senators in the Henry County delegation. The Board of Commissioners shall appoint two members, which shall not require nominations from outside entities, and one of the two members is not required to reside in Henry County, but may reside in Henry County if they choose. In the event of a tie vote for an appointment, the Chair shall be controlling, the Chair of the Board of Commissioners shall appoint one member, and they shall be the chairperson of the authority. So the House of Representatives appointment, Stephanie, I'm going to need you to, to help me on this one.
Okay. The House of Representatives have nominated Brandon Hutchinson, Hutchison, I'm sorry, Atlanta Motor Speedway, and the Senate has nominated Kyle Pope, which is a local business owner with multiple businesses in Henry County. Those are the two nominees, but you all will need to include them in your
Okay.
final vote.
And so is there a nomination from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Anglin?
Motion to nominate John Means.
Okay, motion to nominate John Means, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Any opposed? Is there a second nomination?
We have a motion to nominate Arthur Christian.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chair, I'm sorry, can you, can, who seconded?
Arthur Christian.
Did someone second that? I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Anglin seconded, I'm sorry. Got a motion and a second, if there's no discussion, all in favor of Arthur Christian. Okay, motion carries.
And Chair, oh, I'm sorry, you'll make your appointment?
Huh?
You'll announce your appointment as well?
Oh, okay, and so, yes. So wait a minute, did somebody not vote?
No, you voted on the, on the two appointments, but
Okay, so my appointment is, Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, yes, Dr. Chetiqua Hamilton is yours, and I don't know that they need a vote, vote because you can make the appointment, but you will need to vote on the delegates in the houses.
So can you read the appointments and all of the names, so then we can take a vote?
Yes, ma'am. So for the House of Representatives, it's Brandon Hutchison, for the Senate, it's Kyle Pope, you voted on the two appointments from the board already, and you've made your appointment, so I do think you need to vote just for the Senate and the House Representative nominees that I just mentioned. And you want to do them one at a time, Brandon Hutchison?
Can we just vote on the Henry County delegation appointments?
That's fine.
Okay, so the Henry County delegation has made the appointments, Brandon Hutchison and Kyle Pope, can I get a motion?
Motion to accept both.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Here and no discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have a District Two appointment to the Council on Aging, Teresa Elaine Mosley, to fill an unexpired term, July eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-three through September twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move to the consent agenda, if I could have Shannon to come forward, cluster leader, to read our consent agenda for today.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This evening, in the absence of our county manager, I will be reading for you all the consent agenda for the record and for your hearing. First item, Community Development Block Grant, a resolution for the urban county qualification for participation in the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, for federal, federal physical years, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-six. For juvenile court, a resolution to accept a grant awarded in the amount of two hundred thousand from the Criminal from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to fund the Functional Family Therapy Program from July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024. For Facilities Maintenance, a resolution awarding bid 2349 for on-call electrical services to Brown Electrical Services LLC for the emergency and routine electrical service and maintenance needs in all county facilities when in-house service is limited. For Financial Services, a resolution approving letter of engagement for physical year 2022 audit services with Mauden and Jenkins CPA and Advisors. For Fire Rescue, a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners amending the permitting fee schedule in use by Henry County Fire and Rescue. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners reappointing Fire Chief Jonathan Burnett and Battalion Chief Frank Robinson to the Region Four West Georgia Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. And a resolution approving Spalding County Inmate Work Detail Agreement. For Parks and Recreation, a resolution to submit the Land and Water Conservation Fund, known as LWCF, grant pre-application through the Department of Natural Resources for conservation and enhancements at Nash Farm Park. For Police Department, a resolution accepting funds in the amount of $3,000 from the United States Secret Service for the Henry County Police Department's participation in the Cyber Fraud Task Force Digital Evidence Forensic Lab. Public Safety, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of mobile radio equipment from Loden Communications for the two mobile command vehicles currently in production with 10-8 for the Henry County Public Safety Cluster in the amount of $204,238.78, utilizing Red Speed funds for the purchase. For the Sheriff's Office, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the acceptance of the Public Safety and Community Violence Reduction Grant, known as PSCVRG, for ballistic equipment in the amount of $128,471 from the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget. There is no matching funds required. For SPLUS, a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 208... Excuse me. $200,286.61 square feet of right-of-way, more or less, in Land Lot 83 of the Sixth District of Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the appropriate provisions of the county code... of the state code, Section 3234. Through Section 32319 for the Western Parallel Connector. Resolution to authorize the acquisition of $63,344.77 square feet of right-of-way and $5,202.18 square feet of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot 83 of the Sixth District of Henry County, Georgia, also by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of the state code, Section 323-4 through Section 32319, also Western Parallel Connector. And this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. No discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. On our regular agenda, the Police Department has a resolution to the Board of Commissioners to accept an award from the Georgia Governor's Office of Planning and Budget. Lieutenant Powell?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. I'm Lieutenant William Powell. The Henry County Police Department is committed to enhancing the capabilities of its officers to respond more efficiently and effectively to the gun violence in Henry County. In 2022, a grant was applied for with the Georgia Governor's Office of Planning and Budget for the Public Safety and Community Violence Reduction Program. The Henry County funding priority with this grant is to invest in the gunshot technology software through Flock. The Henry County Police Department was awarded a $1.65 million for the purchase and installation of the gunshot technology. This grant would cover all costs for the next three years, and there's no local match to this. This evening, I'm asking for the board's approval to accept this grant. I have with me Sergeant Glenn Turner to talk about the gunshot technology and give you a better understanding of how this will aid our officers in responding to gun violence and, of course, answer any questions you may have. Sergeant Turner?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I have a short PowerPoint presentation to kind of explain what the gunshot technology is. The Henry County Police Department currently has 100 Flock license plate cameras throughout the county. These are the cameras that read the license plate when we're interested in them based on crime or something that may have been a crime because the vehicle is in the area. These cameras have solved countless crimes and have been very successful in assisting with criminal investigations. Based on the success of Flock license plate cameras throughout the county, the $1.65 million that Lieutenant Powell was just speaking of has been earmarked for the Flock gunshot detection technology. The gunshot detection technology units are called Ravens, and they will work with our existing 100 Flock license plate cameras to detect gunshots, identify the location of those gunshots. The license plate cameras will take pictures of the vehicles leaving the area where the gunshots were detected, and all this can occur in as little as one minute. The grant, as Lieutenant Powell mentioned, will be paid for for three years. That's going to get us 20 square miles of coverage every year for the next three years with no matching funds. The coverage is in those one-mile-square increments, but the one-mile-square increments do not have to be connected, so we can put them in better areas of the county. The 20 square miles has yet to be finalized, but it's going to be areas with higher population, higher crime rates. The way the Raven gunshot technology works is it's going to send alerts to the officers in the field and to the real-time crime center over at 911. The alerts can be as accurate as 15 feet from where the gunshot was detected, and it will allow for faster response times and the apprehension of criminals that are trying to leave the scene. The Raven gunshot technology has been tested with an accuracy rating of 90% or better. It's currently deployed in different parts of Georgia, most notably in Cobb County. This technology could also potentially save lives if the victim of a violent assault is unable to call for help, but the officers are getting a notification that there was a shot in the area, and they respond and then find the victim. This system will be managed by the Henry County Police Department Special Operations Division. And as I mentioned before, the system will be completely paid for with the grant funds, so there's no cost to the citizens of Henry County. Next, there's going to be a very short one-minute video that just kind of explains this.
Welcome to Raven, Flock Safety's gunshot detection system. Using machine learning, Raven can tell when gunshots occur in a community and provide the location where the gunshot happened in under 60 seconds. Raven can alert officers minutes before a 911 call ever comes in or in areas where no one has reported a crime, leading to faster, better responses and outcomes. And with Flock OS, you can easily view video footage and ALPR images from nearby Condor and Falcon cameras, creating real-time, objective situational awareness, so you can find and apprehend the right suspects faster. The Raven system currently boasts best-in-class accuracy and efficacy with over 90% gunshot detection accuracy and location accuracy within 90 feet. Flock Safety. Let's shape a safer future together.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. No discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, are you next? I lost my paper.
Yes, good evening. This evening, I am presenting before you all an annual action plan for the 2023 physical year for Henry County's Community Development Program as well as its home program. There is also a second resolution to this agenda item authorizing myself as a certifying officer for the review of environmental reviews for activities under the county's CDBG, NSP, as well as home programs. Specifically, HUD has announced that Henry County is eligible for $1.1 million, just over $1.1 million, and just over $539,000 for home funds. The $1.1 is in CDBG funding. We propose to continue activities under public facility and infrastructure as well as public housing administration, modernization, economic development, public service, and planning and administration. Our public facility and infrastructure are capital improvement type of projects. This includes sidewalks. This includes water flood prevention. This could be new water systems in underserved areas or improved systems in areas where the pipes are corroded or too small. These could also include street improvements. Under public housing, historically, Henry County has assisted the two public housing agencies within the county on modernization of public housing units. And of course, with economic development, we propose to continue assisting small businesses with facade improvements. Under public services, as you're aware, we assist numerous nonprofits in the community who provide services to those in our community of low to moderate income with their needs. Our planning and administrative costs will go to assist the county in the salaries and benefits as well as supplies to carry out these programs. Additionally, in this proposal, we have unexpended CDBG CV funding. Specifically, we are seeking to reprogram funds awarded to the People's Health Exchange and some administrative costs. These are activities that have not been carried out in a reasonable time. Specifically with the administrative costs, this is just solely because staff's time and expenses are less than the funds allowed. So we'd like to put these funds back into the program to be of direct benefit to residents in our county. So that totals $35,000. Next is our home funding. As I mentioned, HUD has announced that we are eligible for $539,724. With this, we specifically look to utilize just over $53,000 for administrative costs. Again, that's salaries, benefits, and supplies needed for the county to carry out these funds, as well as assisting CHODOs. Those are community housing development organizations with $300,000. Down payment assistance program at $100,000, and tenant-based rental assistance at $85,752. As you're aware, this will actually, hopefully, be our first year receiving home funds. We did bring this before you all last year, but our application was not awarded. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Again, this is a two-resolution agenda item. My second resolution is certifying myself as your certified officer for environmental reviews. What that means is the staff conducts the reviews. I review those and sign off on those on behalf of the county, and I can represent the county in court should there be questions on any of our findings and how we utilize those funds.
Okay, great. Shannon, could you go back to the slide that talks about the home funds? So this is our first year getting the home funds. Community housing development organization. Give us an example of what that entails.
Most definitely. So the CHODOs, as they're commonly known of, these are local organizations who are nonprofits primarily, and their mission is to further housing. Their mission is to further affordable housing and assist those in need in our community. What we will be doing is reaching out to nonprofits in our community who, again, its mission is to work with housing in our area, and they will complete an application. They will have to become certified as CHODOs for... to receive funds in Henry County. The specific tasks and objectives that they may carry out could be housing rehab. It could be housing development. It could be redevelopment of existing structures or converting those maybe used to be commercial uses now to housing.
And the down payment assistance program?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, the county does not have a down payment assistance program outside of our neighborhood stabilization. And I'm certain you all are aware that that is limited to homes that we've acquired through NSP. This will allow residents funding opportunities that would be... that they'll be eligible for countywide. They're... they will be able to look at homes on the open market and not limited to that the county has an inventory through NSP. So that would consist of a down payment and most likely a closing cost assistance.
And so they have to complete an application for that?
There will be an application requirement. They will have to also qualify for a loan. We do not issue any loans. We do not oversee that process. They will have to go through a loan with a banking process.
So this usually is for like first-time home buyers?
Yes, ma'am. And first-time home buyers under HUD is defined as those who have not owned a home in three years.
And then the tenant-based rental assistance?
Yes, ma'am. Tenant-based rental assistance is going to be similar to the voucher program for Section 8. As you're aware, Henry County does not receive voucher 8s from DCA or directly from HUD. But this will allow us a level of funding to administer those type of programs directly here in our community. This is not limited to public housing. This will be available to any renter in need that meets income eligibility requirements.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I'd like to know, are there any dates that you have to meet that these funds have to be exhausted? Do you have to meet some deadline dates, please?
Yes, ma'am. So each year, Henry County, along with any other CDBG entitlement, has a timeliness deadline. Our timeliness deadline is 60 days prior to the end of a program year. For us, that typically falls around the 1st of May, 1st or 2nd of May, but that like first business day of the month of May typically.
For your tenant rental assistance program, this is something that our senior citizens can participate in as well?
Yes, ma'am. There won't be any age restrictions. This is simply for those of income needs.
When it comes down to the application process for our senior citizens, will you have any workshops to help them do that paperwork? Or how can they get some assistance to work to get these monies that are available?
Yes, ma'am. We can definitely do that. Some of the things we've done in the past is scheduled dates to actually go to our senior centers to deliver the information. For example, excuse me, with our housing rehab program that's designed specifically for seniors, we have dates that we attend on-site at the senior centers to not only assist with applications, but we can also hear information about other needs that they may have. Additionally, those who call in and request help, our staff has happily gone out, met individuals at their home, sat outside on the porch, whatever makes them comfortable. sat outside on the porch, whatever makes them comfortable to assist in that process.
And one other question?
Yeah, Commissioner Thomas?
We have multiple conversations going on, officer. Officer, could you all step outside and have that conversation so that we can hear the presentation? Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, go ahead.
Thank you. You had also indicated that you were changing your process of how you do your paperwork this time. There could be some movements and adjustments in funds. I just wanted to know, will you set up a regular communication to let the board know how you're making those adjustments and those movements of funds?
Yes, ma'am. In the slide I've put on the board, any movement between those bolded line items will always come back before the board. If it's exceeding 25%, that is per our citizens' participation plan. Additionally, we will make you all aware via email or direct conversation in regards to changes in our activities.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
So this is a public hearing. And if there is anyone wishing to come and speak during the public hearing, you will have three minutes to speak on this item. So no one has come forward. So this concludes the public hearing. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second, sir.
Got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, part two? Oh, that was it? Shannon, are you supposed to do a part two? I thought you said it was two-part. Or are we done?
I did mention both in the presentation in regards to the second resolution being the certification authorizing me as your official signer for environmental reviews.
Okay.
But if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, then, so that was included in the-- okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
It just wasn't on the PowerPoint.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you all.
Okay. Kenton, you can come on up now. This is a public hearing, RZ-23-04, Meredith Holmes Incorporated of McDonald's.
Good evening, Chair, board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is for property located at 1800 McGary Road. The property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural. The request before you is to rezone the property from RA to R2, single-family residence. Purpose is to develop two single-family lots served by individual septic systems. The future land use map designation for the property is low-density residential, which would support up to two dwelling units per net acre. This is the survey for the property and the site plan for the property. So the property itself is 1.984 plus or minus acres. Again, two lots, that would be a lot size of 0.992 acres each. The reasoning for the request is that it's just shy of the one-acre minimum requirement for one individual RA lot. Applicant is requesting rezoning for R2 for those two lots. Again, a rezoning property from RA to R2 for those two lots, a density of 0.992 dwelling units per acre net. On June 8th, 2023, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the request to rezone the property with the conditions shown on the overhead screen. These conditions establish a building material requirement, a minimum home size of 1,800 square feet, and a 75-foot front yard setback to be in line with the remaining RA properties along McGary Road. I would like one point of clarification and one recommendation to condition three. With the lots being just shy of an acre, they can support a side-entry garage. And thus, I would like to recommend that the final language for condition three read, "All homes shall have a minimum two-car side-entry garage." Other than that, the conditions are the same as shown on the board. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Okay, so this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board. Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the project? If you will also have a collective total of 10 minutes. Having non-public hearing is concluded. I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Anglin. This is your district.
I want to just go ahead and make the motion with the amendment to condition three with a minimum two-car side-entry garage. Motion to approve.
Okay, so got a motion and a second?
From Commissioner Lewis. There's no further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so the county attorney has a presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, remaining members of the board, and citizens of Henry County. I'm presenting today some information regarding the appointment of District 2 commissioners. Commissioner, there've been some, I guess, questions in the community. I just wanted to make sure people understood the process of what occurred. So on May 19th of 2023, the Chief Judge of Henry County-- I apologize. Can you all hear me now? Okay. On May 19th of 2023, the Chief Judge of Henry County Superior Court signed an order declaring a vacancy of District 2's commissioner's seat. On May 22nd of 2023, that order was filed with the clerk of court, clerk of Superior Court. This is a copy of the order. Because it's filed in the clerk of Superior Court's office's public record, anyone can go down and get a copy of it. This is page one of that order. This is page two of that order. So this is the specific part of the order for which the board had to abide by. It states specifically, "Accordingly, the court hereby declares a temporary vacancy of the District 2 commissioner's seat on the Henry County Board of Commissioners due to illness. The remaining members of the Henry County Board of Commissioners as set out in Senate Bill 22 shall appoint a qualified interim successor for District 2 commissioner. The appointment shall be from a list of nominees provided by the County Executive Committee of the political party of which the vacated board member was the candidate at the last general election." So this is the Senate Bill 22. This is 3A to what, for which the judge, Chief Judge, was referring to in the order. Senate Bill 22 is also a public document. You can either, of course, we have copies here at the county. I don't know if Stephanie would be willing to give them out if anyone request a copy. But you could also go to legis.gav. That's the legislators' page. You can go to, do an advanced search and pull up Senate Bill 22 and get the current copy. But again, what it states here is "The Chief Judge of the Superior Court of Henry County should have the power to declare a temporary vacancy on a board created by the ill health or suspension from the, from office of a board member provided by, at the length of such temporary vacancies, shall not exceed 90 days. In the event of a temporary vacancy, no later than 14 days after the direct, excuse me, declaration of the vacancy, a qualified interim successor from the district in which the vacancy occurred shall be appointed by the remaining members of the board. Such appointments shall be made from a list of nominees provided by the County Executive Committee of the political party of which the vacated board member was the candidate at the last general election in which the board seat was up for election." So the former commissioner of District 2 was a member of the Democratic Party. Accordingly, the Henry County Democratic Party had to provide a list of nominees for which the Board of Commissioners could appoint a District 2 commissioner. This is a letter, a letter that was provided by the Henry County Democratic Committee. And I'm sorry that the, I can't make the letter any bigger here. But basically, we received that letter, which was read to the board on June 6th. So the letter was read to the board. It contained the name of Commissioner Robinson for District 2 Commissioner. On the list, the Commissioner Lewis moved to appoint Commissioner Robinson for District 2 Commissioner. Commissioner Anglin seconded the motion to appoint Commissioner Robinson for District 2 Commissioner, and a motion was passed by a majority vote. So that's all in compliance with Senate Bill 22 and the order as declared by the court. After that occurred, a qualification as required by the statute, there has to be a special election at this point because the vacancy obviously is beyond 90 days. The qualifying fees was approved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Once the qualifying fee was approved, at the July Board of Elections and Registration Meeting, they passed a resolution to have the special election November 7th of 2023. So that's when the special election will occur for the District 2 Commissioner. And that's pretty much a summary. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to have you answer those questions.
No, just wanted to have clarity since there seems to be a lot of misinformation going around.
Well, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. I'd like to call for approval of the minutes for June 6th, 2023 of our regular BOC meeting. Got a motion, can I get a second? All in favor? Motion carries.
Chair?
Huh?
There is no one signed up for public comment, but I would at least wanted to mention it.
Okay. Upcoming meetings and events, mileage rate, public hearing and adoption, Tuesday, July 25th at 10:00 a.m., Tuesday, July 25th at 6:00 p.m., Tuesday, August 1st at 9:00 a.m. August 14th, 2023 at 6:30 is a regular scheduled BOC. The executive session was canceled. We will not be going into executive session, will we?
Sorry, we did take off the real estate matter, but we do need to go in for litigation.
Okay, so we have litigation. So we're not doing the real estate. So we will, okay. Okay, then, so I need to call for a motion for us to go into executive session for litigation.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Okay, so we will go into executive session, and then we will reconvene after executive session. Stephanie, we back on? Okay. I'd like to get a motion to reconvene from executive session. Got a motion in the second. All in favor? Got a motion in the second. All in favor? So, Nasa, do you need to?
Yes.
Do you want me to come up?
Yes.
Chair, I'm asking for the Board of Commissioners to approve a motion for the Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve the settlement agreement in the case of Henry County versus zero point zero four acres right-of-way, case number SUCV two zero two two zero zero two seven one, to approve the settlement agreement along with the authority of the Chair to sign the deed in that case.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Can I get a second? Got a motion in the second. No discussion. All in favor? Motion carries. Anything else, Stephanie? Okay. Motion. Meet in a jar. Thank you.